It's okay, they'll allow us to get close enough to start the meeting, I think. We'll start with a pledge to the flag. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, tonight we start with a public hearing to consider the proposed local law to provide for revision of the village's administration and enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the Uniform Code, and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Energy Code in the Village. Will we need a reading of the proof?
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the Village Law of the State of New York and pursuant to resolution of the Village Board of the Village of Baldwinsville, adopted April 21st, 2022, a public hearing will be held by the Village Board at Village Hall 16 West Genesee Street on the 19th day of May at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to provide for a revision of the village's administration and enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention and Building Code, the Uniform Code, and the State Energy Conservation Construction Code, the Energy Code, in the Village. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party at the office of the Village Clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of the proposal? Is there anyone speaking against the proposal? If not, could I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Who?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Second public hearing is to consider a proposed local law to provide for the adoption of a local energy conservation construction code as modified by New York Stretch.
Notice is hereby given that pursuant to Section 7-706 of the Village Law of the State of New York and pursuant to a resolution of the Village Board, adopted April 21st, a public hearing will be held by the Village Board at Village Hall on the 19th day of May 2022 at 7:35 PM to consider a proposed local law to provide for the adoption of a local energy conservation construction code as modified by New York Stretch. A copy of the proposed local law may be examined by any interested party at the office of the Village Clerk. At the time and place of the hearing, all interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard.
And that's now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the proposal? Not hearing any. Anyone wishing to speak against the proposal? Could I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing? Both of you?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Datto?
Aye.
Opposed? Did you all have any questions about the Stretch Code tonight?
Are we approving it later on?
Yes.
With that being said, we would...
Well, we have someone on Zoom right now, so I figured it might be good to get him out of the way at the beginning of the meeting.
Could he give us a pre synopsis of what the Stretch Code does, how it changes code?
Mike, did you hear that?
Mike's gone. He's there.
No, I'm sorry, I can't hear any of the mics in the room. I think the only mic that's coming over at all is the one on the camera. All the other mics are...
Right.
I don't think they're live, but good evening.
So, Mike, the question is, the Board would like to know what the New York State Stretch Energy Code does, you know, what the difference is, basically, cost difference, building home, why it's the way to go.
Yeah, so generally speaking, there's about a 1% cost increment overbuilding just to the current Energy Code that's adopted with the statewide code. The benefit is that unlike any of the other codes, this increase saves whether it's homeowners or building owners, developers, whoever, money every month over the course of the ownership of the home or the building. The simple payback, which really isn't the best way to look at that, but the energy savings ranges from five years to just under 10 years, simple payback, and that's of course not taking advantage of any of the incentives that are available from the utilities or NYSERDA or whoever. So, it saves money, which has been proven for years. I've been in the business for 40 years, starting out as a home builder. The benefit is that that saving stays in the community and gets reinvested in the community. So, and then there's a lot of other non-energy benefits too that are worthwhile. But saves energy, home's more comfortable, little bit better ventilation requirements, just a bunch of small changes that aren't big by themselves, but all together represent about a 10 or 11% savings over the current statewide mandatory code.
Thank you.
The other thing is, the other thing is that I know that all those, or at least I think you're involved in the Clean Energy Communities Program.
Yes.
I don't know who your lead is on that, but I do recall hearing that you're quite a ways along to doing a lot of the requirements for that program that earn you incentive dollars as a community. And then also, there's a, for small communities, there's a $5,000 incentive just for adopting it, which then can become $15,000 for the next activity that you take care of. Plus, it wins you points, and like I say, I do recall, and sorry, I don't know exactly, that you folks are quite active in Clean Energy Communities, and you've approved a lot of points. The Stretch Energy Code adoption gets you the second highest number of points towards your total, which you can then open the door to multiple $10,000 grants after that.
Right, and that's one of the things, you know, that was in mind in adopting this code, plus, you know, the cost savings, like you said, in the community, it's building a better building, the building itself will be more comfortable. You won't have as, with less air infiltration, you'll have less possibility of mold and moisture in the walls, so it's just a better code to go with. Is that everything? You guys have any other questions?
I'd just like to thank him if you could.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I'm sorry you can't hear everyone speaking, but it's a hard room to mic here.
Oh, that's fine. It's my pleasure to be here, and you know, the only problem I got is that I told on you folks, your hockey team to knock off that darn West Jenny team every year. You didn't do it for me.
Sorry, we're sorry.
No, it's okay. They got knocked out by the eventual winners anyhow, so, West Jenny that is. But anyways, you know, you know you can get ahold of Josh Stack anytime you need him.
Sure.
I know I've been on the horn with, I believe, your villagers' organization. You got a good group there. You folks will do the right thing, it'll work out. But if we can be of any assistance anywhere along the road, you let us know and put Josh and his wife in your prayers, because I think they're having Number Six tonight.
Ooh. That's why he wasn't able to talk. I knew she was ready, but I didn't know it was that many. Thanks a lot.
Mike, I'm gonna get him a cordwood rack, you know, so if he runs out of room, you can just stack him up like cordwood.
Yep, just stack him up on the porch.
Yeah.
All right.
If you don't need me anymore, I'll take my leave, but it's a pleasure, and you folks be well, and thank you all for your service and all mayhem that's going on for the New York State Fair and everything else.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike.
You all be well.
Right, thank you, you too.
Okay. We had a motion in a second, right? For what? For closing that public hearing? I thought we already did.
We had a motion in the second.
And we unvoted? We were voting out? All in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Now we'll move on to the regular meeting of the Village Board. Could I have a motion for the approval of the public hearings and Village Board meeting minutes from May 5th, 2022? I'll make a motion.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Now we go on to citizens' comments, and Mike put forth a challenge for you folks, for entertainment purposes if nothing else. Lauren from the Greater Baldensville Chamber of Commerce spoke to us about an open container waiver for their June 4th karaoke event. We can lower that if you want.
I'm saying, I don't think I'm that old.
Are you even gonna do karaoke now?
No, I'm not even doing karaoke that night. They think I am. I'm not. So, I'm Lauren from the Baldensville Chamber. We are planning a very last-minute spring/summer kickoff. We are planning to do it in the Balden Canal Square on June 4th. We were told we won't need any police assistance for the event, because we will be renting a tent and putting it up right in the square without moving any benches, which I heard was needed to make sure...
Are you coordinating with Chuck?
Yep, we're gonna meet tomorrow. We're gonna make sure that I don't...
Make sure you don't find any of our underground electrical?
Yeah. If needed, we have the quote also for barrels, so we think we can always go smaller on the tent. We're not, we're hoping to sell right around like 150 tickets, but that's kind of dependent on if people want to come. So, we are kind of budgeting for that as of right now. We are going to be selling tickets for $20, and they're available already, because we have an option to move it inside if needed. But I don't think that's the plan or the goal at any point. We'd like to have it outside in the Canal Square if possible. Lock One Distilling will be the only one selling the alcohol. There in Phoenix, they do our Tazza Beville every year. They are a distillery. So they will have the actual bar set up. Everyone else would be sampling specialty summer cocktails. So we have four other vendors, Angry Garlic, BG1, which will be opening, Pete's a man, I believe. We haven't gotten 100% confirmation from them yet. I think there's one more. So, the only thing I think we're waiting on is the updated insurance form from Lock One Distilling. But I sent over the old one that we have, so they just need to update it. He's out of town. But other than that, I think, yeah, so we are just requesting...
Her company says everything that they need?
Yes, we do. Everything is in order, all the requirements.
So then, do we act now?
Yeah.
Could I have a motion to waive the open container? I don't know what the word is.
What time?
Yeah, we need times.
Four to 7:00 PM.
From four to 7:00 PM.
Yep, just in time for dinner. Yep. Quick karaoke in the park.
For Baldensville Canal Square.
It's gonna be restricted to just inside the tent, correct?
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Chief, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, we've been in contact, much similar to other events that have occurred down there. Based upon the past, I don't see any need for additional security. I think they'll have it covered.
Okay.
Sweet.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you. We get a vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I'm not big on this voting stuff. Okay, next on the agenda is Children's Librarian Megan Roberts.
Hi, I'm Megan. I'm a children's librarian at Baldensville Library. We are hoping to do some programs in the Mercer Park Gazebo this summer. We were looking to do a Storytime Thursday nights from 6:00 to 7:00, and a Craft Friday afternoons from 2:00 to 3:00. And we were just looking for, hopefully, a waiver for the fee for the gazebo. We did some programming outside last summer, and it was pretty popular. We had about 30 families. It was just nice to be in the community, to be outside, enjoy the weather.
When would this start, Megan?
It would start the week of July 4th and go for six weeks, I believe, through August 11th.
Yeah, I remember that you did it last year. COVID kind of pushed you outdoors, so it was a good use of our park. And you're looking for a waiver of the rental of the gazebo, correct? No, let's have a motion in a second. Then we'll do discussion. Okay, second. Discussion.
Do you charge stuff? Does that stuff need to take care of now?
No, I think we have that all. We, yeah, I just made you a copy of the application, but no, we're all set with the insurance and everything.
Any other questions?
Do you charge people, or is it...?
Nope, it's completely free over to the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. I vote yes on all these things. Okay, last but not least, Reverend William Mudge, Pastor of Baldensville, First United Methodist Church. It's back for another season.
Yes, sir. It's nice to be in person with you this year. I wanted to thank Maureen Butler, the mayor, and Chuck for the beautiful grounds they keep over there, and Pastor Jeff Hodge for really being the brains of this. If it was raining, I'd be here, but since it's nice, I get to come. And I wanted to ask for permission to use the island for our annual church on the island. I hope you all received the paperwork. I won't worry about reading it to you again, but we've been doing this for about six years. Would like to do it for another six or seven years if the management allows.
And in this case, you're asking for a waiver of the fees also, correct?
That'd be wonderful. More than any donations I make.
Could I have a motion to welcome the church to the island and waive the fees?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Any questions?
Do you have all your paperwork you need, Maureen?
I do. You pretty much just use their request.
And just so you know, it's an administrative service, but it does business under the Baldensville First United Methodist Church. It's under our umbrella for insurance and things.
And I don't know how many of the Sundays have Saturday activities before...
Yeah, we will, we'll send you a schedule to show you which Saturdays.
Thanks. If anything goes really wonderfully well, please contact Pastor Jeff Hodge. He needs a lot of pats on the back, and if something goes wrong, give me a call.
All those in favor of the waiver?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you again.
Very good. Okay, next is trustees' comments.
Whoops, the mayor has time.
Donald Boedrich, he's still here?
Oh, yes.
That wants to do the, yep, there he is. I'll let him introduce himself. He's our farmer's market local. If anybody has questions about his plans, maybe you can give us a two-minute synopsis of what you've already accomplished as far as your plans, and then if they got questions, they can ask.
His insurance.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Okay. My name is Don Bodry. I'm the owner of CMY Concessions DBA Cluckenberg Food Truck. I've owned this business for the last six years. I've been in the Baldensville community for the last five years at the CMY Family Sports Center, over there with Pete Raymond. I ran the concessions there for three and a half years, and live right over in Village Green in the condos. And sometime last year, Mike Timmeras, I think it was, and Dave Ebbie approached me regarding Farmer's Market. Dave and I met a week ago with Linda, and the discussion came up is, you know, how do we bring the farmer's market back to Village Square? Last year, an individual was running, pulled out midway, and so what I agreed to do is to come in with my food truck every Tuesday, 3:00 to 7:00. I will work with Dave Ebbie, Linda, to coordinate vendors. A little bit about my experience with that. In 2018, I put together the first Syracuse Food Truck Association event at CMY Family Sports Center. We drew roughly 8,000 people to this event. Second year, I was responsible for the Second Annual Food Truck Festival at the New York State Fair, then we brought in over 10,000. And in 2020, I formed a nonprofit, which is called Hungers for Hope, and we provide tangible items and services to grassroots organizations throughout our community. And what we do is we put together craft vendor, farmer's market, food truck festivals throughout the community. Last weekend, we raised $500 for P&amp;S right out of Beville. Year before, in the fall, we raised $1,000 for the Nursery School, Peace Incorporated. We provided $500 two years ago, and alone with about 500 deals. Then we work with local places like the Liverpool Elk Lodge, Maddydale BFW, the Maddydale American Legion, Clear Path for Veterans. So in the course of the last two years, between craft vendor festivals, food trucks, we've raised probably over $20,000 for organizations right here in our community. So, one of the things that I have a plan for is a little different, is that we really want to bring things back into, or to get it reestablished to where it's consistency for our farmer's market every Tuesday, 3:00 to 7:00. And we really need to focus on three things: local, local, local. Local farmers, local vendors, and local businesses that are all surrounding the Village Square. And I think with my varying abilities and bringing people together, this is a great opportunity to show some consistency in the Village. My food truck would be a constant presence there on a Tuesday, and I believe in sharing the wealth. So if there's another local business that wants to set up, for example, Sunshine Ice Cream right up the road. This year, they just started a brand-new mobile hard ice cream truck. You know, it's bringing in our local people that surround our area. Really want to keep the money right within the community and support the people that support the community. I do know there's, Lauren from the GDCC has offered some help through Dave Ebbie, and I believe, Dick, you mentioned Shelley Hoffman. And what I want to do is bring in people that are within the community, that know the community, they go slightly better than I do, and to ensure that this runs for the duration of the farmer's market. Last year, I think it ended after five weeks. I've already sent the general liability information and the paperwork to Jody this afternoon that shows that the general liability covers the Village of Baldensville for the duration of the event. And tomorrow, we'll get the fee out, should this be approved. And, you know, we're just hoping to bring things back and bring the consistency to where the community is shopping right in their village. And when they shop in the Village Square, that's gonna lead to them going to Sam Miguel's, it's gonna lead them to go WT Brews, Dollar General, Sells, Atlantic Seafood. So it's really gonna keep people right in our own village.
Excellent.
Questions, concerns?
Go for it.
What kind of support do you think you would need on a weekly basis from the Village?
None.
Okay. And like...
Like blocking park these places off, stuff like that? I mean, wasn't that stuff we had to deal with before?
This will be the first time I'm hosting it. So what I'll do is I'll get with Dave Ebbie, Mike Timmeras, guys that have already have shown that, you know, farmer's market, the farmer's market has been successful there. So I'm gonna go to the Village Square next week, because we're only about two weeks out, three weeks out to June 7th. I'm gonna go there. We have to map out, we have to find out exactly how many vendors that we can put in the square. And the parking has always been where it's just whatever parking is available. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you know...
I think when Mike ran it, he did, we allowed him to block off the parking spots that were immediately adjacent to the square for the vendors to use. It was, you know, it was sometimes tough dealing with some of the employees from the local businesses.
Right.
They didn't like it.
That, you know, trying to keep those clear after noon on a Tuesday. But, you know, we did grant him the permission, but it was his responsibility to make it happen.
Okay. And was there someone within the Village, within the Village that is familiar with that, that would like to meet me to show me what they have done in the past?
I could show them, maybe, when he's up there.
Yeah.
We could show them the power stuff.
Yeah.
Power needs, you can talk to Chuck.
Yeah. Chuck McCullough is our superintendent of public work, so if you coordinate with him when you're gonna come out, he can meet you down there and show you what's where and...
I just sent everyone my email address, my full name and my cell phone number. So if anyone does have further questions, you know, and once we're done, or additional questions, it's always things that pop up after a meeting. Feel free to reach out to me. Our goal is really, is that we, the way that I've always gone in, and I'm in the town of Duette right now. I run their carrier park concessions. I had the contract for that this year, and I'll be going into a three- to five-year contract to run the concessions for the next three to five years. My food truck every Thursday will be on Paper Mill Island. That was part of a payment that was made to the Rotary three years ago. I just received word from Catamaroo that my food truck will be there every Thursday. That was part of an agreement we made three years back. I'm also in the town of Van Vieren, which is to hold their concessions at their Town of Van Vieren Swimming Pool that will run from June 18th through August. And again, my background is concessions. My background is events. My background is, it's just bringing people together. And we have an opportunity to where every other town or village primarily in central New York has a farmer's market. And we need to show the community that we have consistency, and we have to bring that back again. And as I mentioned to Dave, you know, I'm not gonna pull out five weeks in. That insurance policy covers the vendors, so they can show up every single week and not have to worry about whether there's gonna be a market three weeks in, four weeks in, five weeks in. So the goal is to work with the local farmers, work with local vendors, and to partner with the local businesses. Whether that is collecting menus, discount coupons, information about their businesses, and try to get that out to the community. Because not only are we gonna bring in the Beville community, but we're gonna bring them in from Liverpool, Memphis, and Elbridge, maybe that are driving through. You know, it's a main street, a heavily trafficked area, and hopefully that's gonna drop some new people in. And we really want to promote the local businesses at the end.
And did you say you were...
Anybody have questions?
Did you say you were planning to start June 7th?
That's the second Tuesday. That date was chosen by Dave Ebbie. Specifically, you see, the second Tuesday is when the strawberries start to come in. takes, you see, the second Tuesday is when the strawberries start to come in, some of the fruits and the vegetables. And currently, right now, most Farmer's Market, and, you know, Dave really educated me on this, is most of the farmers now are buying through, you know, brokers. And then, you know, they'll buy, that's how they're able to start so early on. However, the local farmers in Beville and Liverpool and Cato and all, they're dependent on their own crops, and that's typically comes in first, second week of June. So, you know, Dave has the experience in that, the knowledge of it, all along with whatever data he has given us. And, you know, this is about a three-week window, and I'm really confident that we're going to be able to fill the village with the maximum number of vendors. We want to do it correctly. We want to do it safely. And, you know, I appreciate Dick bringing me in and reaching out to me because I never put together, and I really should be talking to the board as well. It's great to have Dave's knowledge and Linda's knowledge, but it's also great to have the superintendent to be able to show me where the parking is, power, and what can we do to make this a enjoyable added feature to the village.
We welcome the return of a Farmer's Market and hope it's very successful.
The other thing I did too, so we created a Facebook page, and there's about three, four of them out there. I think Mike Timmeras has one, other people have one. They create them as personal pages. So there's one out there called the Balden's Farmer's Market. It's a personal page. And so with that being a personal page, that belongs to that individual, along as a business page. So I will send, I will send to Dick and probably to Jody, and she could pass that on too, but the new Facebook page is the Baldenville Farmer's Market at Village Square. And it's lengthy, but it separates it from the other two. And the goal will be is to get it to Lauren, to the GDCC, Shelley, be able to get that out to the other local businesses.
And we'll link it to the...
All we want to do is...
To the Village Facebook.
Sorry, go ahead.
Let's say we'll link that to the Village Facebook page.
Okay. I'm sorry, repeat that again?
We have a Facebook page also. We can link yours.
Yeah.
To that.
Yeah. And one of the things I was talking to Dick about is, is when you bring in individuals such as myself, if we create a Facebook page, that page belongs to me. However, I don't want to own it. I want to be able to be an editor on it and then put someone else on it. So if two years from now, I walk away, the village can still have that page. Or, you know, whomever. But it should be something consistent, because every other year, you shouldn't create a brand-new Facebook page to market something. My page has been the same since 2019, I have 3,000 followers. My food truck page has been the same, I have 1,800 followers. Every time someone comes in and wants to put on the Farmer's Market, they create a different page. What I'd like to do is actually get that page, make someone else the administrator. So that way, one day, I choose to walk away and say, hey, I'm going to do something different, it still belongs to the village, or it still belongs, you know what I mean?
Yes.
Because that way, you can then keep building on the page for your own village versus someone coming in and starting all over from scratch again.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you for coming into this evening, and we wish you the best.
Okay. Any questions, you'll see in the email. It's all my information. And before I get out of here, Chuck Chip tells me to head. So let me write that down. Sorry, then take shorthand and...
I think people will be excited because I've seen a lot of comments on Facebook. My wife has mentioned. People are saying, anybody know if there's going to be a Farmer's Market? So people are excited that we're going to have one, and wish you all the best.
And, you know, real point two is what I bring to the table, it's all of the, you know, my connections here. Hungers for Hope, last Tuesday, we just opened up a veteran home, canteen slash cafe, where 100% of the proceeds go back out to the veteran community. And, you know, that is, you know, we're partnering with local veteran places. Unfortunately, it doesn't look good for the Baldenville BFW. But, you know, our goal is to get in the Smoky Hollow, volunteer with the American Legion, donate a month of our proceeds to them, maybe to like the Beville Memorial Military, what you guys were speaking earlier. So those are the things that, you know, I bring a lot to the table with that. And, you know, I really want to see that succeed. And, you know, for five years, when I was at the CMY Family Sports Center, that's on Jones Road, and, you know, most of these kids I watched grow, walked from five years old to Voisa in Baldenville with a modified. So, you know, I'm really heavily invested in the community that I live in. And, you know, I think it's a win-win for all of us. So I really appreciate it. Once time you have my email, if you need anything, please reach out. Chuck, I will reach out to you next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Yep.
Now we'll go on to trustee's comments, starting with Mike. I'll stick with the agenda.
Just the agenda, thank you.
I'm with trustee, and I'm going to stick to the agenda.
I was going to talk about the section, section that was coming up for the Baldenville Athletic Department, but I kind of sort of jinxed that last time I talked about the Beville sports. So I just stick to the agenda. Thanks very much.
Well, hopefully I won't be jinxing the boys' baseball team. Before their final game, retired major league pitcher Jason Grille is going to be inducted into the Baldenville Baseball Hall of Fame on Saturday at 10:30. So if you want to come out and see a major league pitcher who grew up in this community, played Little League here, and then went on to have a great career, you can come out 10:30 and then stay for the boys' game. And I'll stick to the agenda.
Trustee Seaco.
I'll stick with the agenda, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's your turn.
Just a couple quick things. Saturday, 9 o'clock is the beginning of the village-wide garage sale. Hopefully, people all over the village will have stuff out, and we'll see a lot of people wandering through our streets. Don't forget the Memorial Day Parade, May 30th, at 10 o'clock in the morning. That might be a shock for some people. And I did check to find out why it's so early. Linda Ross explained to me that they did it on the holiday in one year, and they had it like at 1 o'clock in the afternoon, and everybody in the parade complained about how hot it was. And then, you know, people were feeling like they were going to pass out, so they thought they would go earlier to avoid the heat of the day. We, I had written down Farmer's Market. I didn't know if Don was coming, but it was kind of exciting because I think he looks like the real deal. And I saw something today that Jody sent. It's a schedule of our parks and things that are going on. It includes Paper Mill Island, the other parks where there's events, the Empire State Bike Ride, kind of a immersive park. It's, it would show you, if you get a chance to look at it, that there's a lot going on in the villages this summer. I know COVID set us back quite a ways. It looks like we bounced back. So I hope people will find something that they enjoy. And if you need the schedule, you can check with Jody at the village clerk's office, and I may post it on the Facebook page. So that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, move on to department heads, starting with our attorney.
I would, just one item. I'd like to request an executive session to discuss confidential matters with the board.
Okay, that becomes item B under new business. Nothing else? We go on to our village clerk.
I will, I don't have anything tonight, but Ruth Troy from the senior center gave me, wanted me to announce that the George Leahy concert was canceled due to a power outage, I believe it was on Monday. It's been rescheduled for Monday, June 6th at 1:00 PM at the center. Bring lawn chairs, weather permitting, otherwise it'll be moved inside. And that'll be all.
I have a question that I didn't want to mention earlier. But was it, is his name, looking at a Don Bowdre, Bowdre? Were you familiar with any of this, we mentioned every Thursday, putting a food truck, based on something Kevin Merrill said?
Right.
In the Rotary Club?
No, I don't know if maybe he was talking about Tuesday Summer Concert Series. That's the only thing I could think of.
Because if he rolls out there every Thursday, it's going to be...
Right. No one, yeah. No, I will, I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Don tomorrow and ask him what he was going, you know, if he misspoke about what night.
Thank you. Our treasurer, Mark Baker.
Yes, just a couple of things. On June 2nd, I was invited to come to the Canton Woods Board Meeting in the morning to review their finances with them for the past year. I'm very happy to do that. It will be with their board and with their director and your other management, I think they have, and the Town of Lysander and Town of Van Buren representatives. So it's just to go over what, at a high level, what makes up their budget, what the larger numbers are in their expenses, you know, aggregate type of thing, which are really pretty simple. So I'm very happy to do that. Second thing, really happy to be able to tell you that within the next few days, you're going to start to get monthly financials. The board and the department heads, I should say revamped, I'll call it revamped financials. So, and I'm really excited to see what they look like and be able to give them to you. So.
We look forward to them.
Oh, absolutely. So, and that's it. The rest will stick with the agenda. Thank you. We're on to DPDW.
Oh, summertime's get pretty busy. We've been out this week playing the sidewalks downtown, trying to get the benches out, the garbage cans, all the summer stuff. The flowers came in today. We hope to get them out, the barrels out next week. Hope to get them hung, the hanging flowers hung next week. The car term is over. Didn't know they're there.
Missed it.
No, they're there for quite a few days, and it's a good group. It's cleaner when they leave than it was when they get here. So that went really well. They're down. We did the bathrooms open for them, you know, from I think Wednesday to Sunday, but that came and went. And a good bunch of people, I know some kids, some people have brought their kids down there, and a lot of fishermen would talk to them and explain a lot what they were doing. It was, it's a pretty cool event. And if you're into fishing at all with your own kids, it's pretty nice for them to walk down there and take a look at it. Water Department's been catching up on some of the water leaks that they ran into last year, still pushing for the meter program. Some of the house owners are still having some issues getting in because of the COVID, going to try to work through that. Other than that, unless there's questions, we're all set.
No questions, we'll move on to codes. I'll stick with the items on the agenda. And the police chief?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. Noticed recently, we've had some DWI drug arrests during the day shift, actually about 10 o'clock in the morning. We had an individual that burned dairy, passed out behind the wheel, who had ingested some molly and heroin, and literally was just passed out in the middle of the driving area there in the parking lot. So it's occurring, it's occurring here, it's occurring in the daytime, and it's something that our officers are familiar with and dealing with. And then just something very, very nice, is this is National Police Week, and we've had some local folks yesterday. A pizza was dropped off by a local business, just as a message of thanks. And Faith Baptist Church out of Van Buren Road dropped off a nice basket today with a little item for each of the officers. Nothing big, but just a thought that comes with a large homemade card, probably about two feet by two feet, that number of the members of the church there signed. So that was just very, very nice. We appreciate the community's support. That's it. Unless there's questions.
Why don't we have cake to celebrate police faith?
Then we'll work on that.
Is it because of police week is why you got this proposal rolled out to us?
Uh, no, not, one's not tied to the other.
Chief, let your department know we appreciate them during the week.
I can definitely do that.
And the other 51 weeks of the year also.
Without a doubt.
Moving on, defending business. Discussion, possible motion approving proposed local law number five, provide for the regulation of the seasonal sale of food from fixed outdoor locations by use of temporary removable structure or use of a motor vehicle, i.e. food trucks. This was tabled from the last meeting, I believe, because we had some comments from citizens, and our attorney looked at it, and there were revisions made, which I know were provided to you. Everybody had a chance to look at that. And if so, does anybody have any questions regarding changes or versions of changes?
I have a question, the 242-25A4. If we could strike the cellular telephone number for each individual working at a structure or motor vehicle while food is being sold, seems a bit, a bit much when not asking to correct telephone numbers for every person working in a restaurant. So I'd like to strike that out of it. And there's also another section, and maybe I'm missing this, but 24232 in the fee section, it mentions in B, license fees for criminal background checks. Looks like we may have taken the criminal background check requirement out of it, and so I don't know if that's necessary to keep that in.
Yeah, I don't really know what B's referencing.
Looks like you can go.
Yeah, me.
I would agree with you. I would agree with you. I would agree with this to your first point as well.
You should have a cellphone number for somebody that we can contact, yes.
Yeah, for the designated operator.
So, if we change the wording there for...
Could just change that to be the cellular telephone number for designated operator?
Yeah, actually, I covered under number six, I believe.
Yes.
Already, so.
Bob, did you concur with the striking of B?
Sure.
Under the other section?
Yes.
All those work for you, Greg?
Yes. That was the intent. So, yeah, there was other wording that we didn't catch.
Do we know what the fees are going to be for the permit process for this?
I'm sorry?
Do you know what the fees are going to be for the permit process, or a question for?
We didn't, we didn't go through that yet. The board's going to have to, you know, approve the fee.
We'll say.
Yeah, I'll look at what we, you know, what we normally charge, the brick and mortar, and see what the, you know, there's a, obviously a difference in doing a smaller vehicle than there will be doing a larger building, but I'll see what I can come up with and get it to you.
At the annual meeting, the village adopts it, the resolution setting the fees within the village, and so there would be an amendment to that resolution.
village, and so there would be an amendment to that resolution.
And it could be that we'll have a seasonal fee and an individual, like if you're coming to town once versus buying, coming into town every Thursday.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, that's the thing that we need to look at as far as the, the application that we have.
So knowing that we'll be setting the fees separately, could I have a motion to approve local law number five? With the changes as proposed?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
That's okay.
Further discussion?
Just thank Garrett for doing all the research that you've done, who made this much better and more palatable to me.
Aye. Okay, I'm ready. Keep going.
He's already aye'd.
He's already aye'd? Hearing no further discussion, could I, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item B, motion approving proposed local law to provide for the revision of the village's administrative and enforcement of the New York State Uniform Fire Prevention Building Code and State Energy Conservation Construction Code in the village.
Move.
Second.
All in favor for your discussion?
I'd like to make one comment if I may. There is a provision in the, in the code that refers to mobile food preparation vehicles, which was left blank. And I would suggest that you insert the words Article 242, so that the, which is the article you've just, rather than, rather than referring to the local law, it's better to refer to the code within the code. So if you, if you change that to refer to Article 242, that brings you right back to the code provisions that you've just adopted. So with that change, which is a minor change, which I, I think that everything is fine to adopt.
So Mike made the motion, correct?
Yes.
Make an amendment?
Make an amendment, definitely change local law five to read Article 242.
And is Megan second, are you agreeing with that?
I'm seconding.
Then could I have a vote? All in favor of those changes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Bob. Now jumping back to the motion on the local law, we have a motion and a second.
Make a motion, I don't know about a second. I'll second.
Okay.
There was a first and a second.
It was, okay.
So what's that? It was Megan and Nate.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Does it, we know what the local law that is?
Well, now that the five was passed, that would be six. And now we're going to be moving on to seven.
Okay.
Just in case, we didn't know if that five was going to pass or not.
And does it matter that five became 242? Or is that just in the...
That's just, that's just, it's awkward.
Okay, today I have a motion approving proposed local law number seven to provide for the adoption of the Local Energy Conservation Construction Code as modified by the New York Stretch.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I would like to just point out that every day on the national news, we hear about environmental crises, climate change, and this is in keeping with helping individuals make a difference. And I think it's a positive thing for our community. Other than that, I'll be quiet. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. There you go, Greg. New business, the discussion possible action to schedule the June 2nd Village Board Meeting at Mercer Park Pavilion at 7:00 PM.
Is this going to be weather dependent?
Yes, that's correct. If it's inclement weather, we will be here.
I thought it was a nice chance to do something a little different and it would show off our park. And we, you know, may want to do a couple others during the summer, possibly like the Canton Woods Pavilion, maybe a community park. I know other boards have done that where they've met different fire departments around the fire district, just to see different people. Might actually get a few people to show up at a meeting that was in the park.
We're going to have one in your backyard too, I think, in August, right? Right there?
That's right.
Yeah, that's what I thought, yeah.
As long as you bring the food.
Notice that the meeting would start at 7:00. There won't be a work session necessarily, but as you can tell, 8:30 is starting to get dusky. So we'll start a half an hour earlier. You also might want to bring some mosquito repellent.
How about a couple of works where we have that meeting still there?
Yeah.
Here.
You can hang it down there.
We only go from 6:00 to 7:00 anyhow. Okay, could I have a mo, do we need a motion to do that?
You need a motion and the clerk needs to publish a note, not in the paper, but in our board and on our website.
And we have adequate time?
Yes.
I will make the motion then to have our June 2nd Board Meeting at Mercer Park.
I'll second it.
Do we need to waive the rental fee?
Or the, or the...
Maybe a 12.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Carried. Moving, there's nothing else on the agenda other than executive session. So.
A motion.
Yes.
You mean a motion to move into executive session?
Yes.
I would, I would request that our code enforcement officer attend the executive session.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Do you need something else you're looking at?
Oh, sorry, I was just, no, at the end, if someone will just take down who makes the motions.
Make the bills and...
Do I actually have to pick a page?
I'll write that stuff down.
Okay.
I may have to bring a copy or something to that meeting in the park because it's the day before my birthday.
Do we need to keep Ruth and Bruce, or Ruth and Nick on the Zoom?
Oh, sorry.
If you want to, yes.